We got it right here in Statesville at a big discount on F-150s again, over $8,000 off. Come see us today, I-77, exit 49B.
The following is a paid program and does not necessarily reflect the views of WSIC. Whatever the story.
We have to end our dependence on China.
Have your say.
This debt crisis is going to set our economy back big time.
This is WSIC News Talk Now.
Well, happy Friday, everybody, and welcome back to We're Just Saying. I am your dutiful, faithful, and humble servant, Senator Vicky Sawyer, and I'm also here with a guy who's about the same, you can say the same thing about him, Commissioner Gene Haupt. Welcome to the program. Thank you for filling in for David Kobel since he's out doing some fun stuff without us. Gene Haupt, welcome to the program.
Happy Friday, everybody. Thank you for asking me to participate.
So today I invited Gene for a couple reasons, but if you want to make sure to check us out on the WSIC app or Facebook, LinkedIn, X, and YouTube, you can download the WSIC app today for live and past episodes of all your favorite WSIC shows, but of course, this is your favorite show. So you can also see us on podcast format later in the day when that gets posted. So today I invited Commissioner Haupt because we're going to do all things Iredell. Because when I look online sometimes and I see some things in the paper about Iredell and the county commission, I call Gene, and then I spend about an hour and a half on the phone with Gene because as you will know from this conversation, he likes to talk a lot.
Come on. What politician doesn't?
He said he is geared up and ready to take abuse from David Kobel's normal abuse from me. But can I tell the story very quickly about how I first met you? Do you remember?
Yes.
You do?
We were at a GOP function in Mooresville.
We were at a GOP function, men's breakfast in Mooresville, and it was time for Iredell County to build high schools, elementary schools, and there was a huge bond referendum on the ballot. Remember that?
Right, right.
I was new to politics. I had no idea what I was getting into, but as a Republican lifelong, I thought, well, surely I can go in and have a civil conversation at that time with the Republican Men's Club. And it didn't go so well, did it, Gene?
Civil and politics and raising taxes don't go together.
That's right.
In Iredell County especially, right?
So here I am, fresh-faced mom, PTO mom, spokesperson for this Capitol campaign, getting out there, just trying to give the facts, and I'm pretty sure if there had been rotten tomatoes that were on the table, I would have been pelted with them at that moment. Remember?
Yes, 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 yes.
So Gene, as a very nice man, as you always were and are, continue to be, you actually saved me. You said, come on, guys, like, let's just be civil here.
Don't shoot the messenger.
Yeah, yeah. And that has been, I remember looking up and talking and I see, now Gene, you stand pretty tall. How tall are you?
Six-five.
Six-five. And you're also a former collegiate athlete, played with Deion Sanders.
Seminoles.
Yes, an old Seminoles guy. So I look up from my speech and I see this very towering figure in the back with a soft voice who said, guys, just let her have her, just give her a break.
Well, the thing is, you know, the biggest thing is people are emotional, and you understand that. And, you know, having been a commissioner now as the longest-serving active commissioner, and, you know, the thing is, when you, a lot of times in politics, you know, one of my favorite sayings is before you judge our actions, ask us our options.
Right, I hear it all the time.
And so
All the time.
So people, you know, a lot of times, you're going to disappoint somebody no matter what we do.
Sure.
Two sides. But I think our goal as elected officials, candidates at that time
Yeah.
are to advocate for, you know,
Transparency.
where we stand and transparency and, you know, I always liked bonds because it's voter-approved. You know, when you go to the people and tell them what you need and why you need it and how much it's going to be and how you intend to pay for it, they appreciate it in the long run.
Sure.
But when you've got people, you know, living check to check, especially in today's world, not back then, even then, you know, they worry about putting food on the table, paying the utility bill, car payment, putting clothes on the kids' backs. And so it's not always a fun place to be, but I always pride myself in telling them the truth.
Sure.
And answering the phone when they call.
Yep.
And I appreciate the people that take the time to call and get the details.
Yeah, for sure.
I think that's important.
And so I had never put out a political sign in my entire life until that session, I put out political signs for Gene Haupt.
All of them.
And he used to have more signs than any candidate known to man, and bless his poor son.
Name recognition.
Yeah, I think there was a sign every 25 feet all over town. But, and now you won, that's been since, what, 2014, you first won, right? And you've been serving ever since as Iredell County Commissioner.
Right.
Now, we have a lot of people who listen in Iredell, but also outside of Iredell. So there are, let's do a quick rundown before the break. There's five commissioners?
Five commissioners.
Okay, you're the longest-serving.
Active commissioner, yes.
Correct. And then we have Chairwoman Melissa Neder.
Melissa Neder.
Yep, and then we have Scotty Brown.
Bert Conley and Brad Strapp.
Okay.
Brad Strapp Senior.
That's right. And so there's five commissioners, so you have to convince two other people to vote with you on every vote.
Takes at least three.
Takes at least three to get everything going on.
Right.
And then in Iredell County, what are some of the main functions that you guys are responsible for? Because we're going to get into some schools construction after the break, but so let's talk about what you guys
Thanks for asking that because a lot of people don't realize, we have 26 county departments.
Twenty-six.
We help fund 19 volunteer fire departments, three rescues, and we have three educational entities that we help fund, especially capital in Iredell County, because we have two different school systems and then Mitchell College.
Okay, got it.
So a lot of people don't have to deal with the two different systems, but, you know, that's a lot on our plate. 300-plus million-dollar business we run with the manager.
300 million?
300-plus million budget every year.
Wow.
And 26 county departments, we have a tremendous asset with, you know, Iredell County, you know, we have a lot of diversity from north to southeast to west.
Yeah, that's right.
We're one of the, you know, we're really known for our agriculture and farming.
Mm-hmm.
And
And we're the crossroads for the future.
That's right.
I mean, we're one of only few communities that have two major intersections that absolutely dissect right in the middle, and we're growing. We have businesses relocating. You guys have some partial, you know, you guys recruit businesses or help with that. And, but 29, you said 29?
Twenty-six county departments.
Twenty-six county departments. That's a lot of people.
Yeah.
You guys are probably one of the largest employers in Iredell County.
I think third or fourth
Yeah.
in the county.
Wow.
You know, I think the school system is one or two. And I can't remember the other industry off the top of my head, but, you know, we have a, you know, you can call it problems or you can call it opportunities.
Yeah.
The growth.
Right.
There's a lot of challenges you see, you know, a lot of frustrated people because of the infrastructure and things like that.
Yeah.
And, but we'd rather be a growing county.
Sure.
You know, we're a top 10 county in most categories, and I say the best county in the country, not just the state.
I agree. We are so blessed.
I'm on the NCACC too, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. So when you talk about the region, I actually represent 12 counties.
Okay.
Or eight counties, I'm sorry, District 12.
Sure.
And so, you know, I have one of the best, most populated districts in the NCACC. So like you, you represent two counties. And so, you know, we're representing a region, and if you can advocate as, from a regional standpoint, you can get a lot more attention with you guys in Raleigh and/or Washington.
Yep. And then I'm going to stop you right here because we're going to talk about school construction, a hot item coming up after the break.
Right.
Thank you so much for listening to We're Just Saying. I am your Senator Vicky Sawyer, along with Commissioner Gene Hoopie Haupt. It's Haupt. We'll be right back.
There's more We're Just Saying with North Carolina Senator Vicky Sawyer on the way from 1059 100.7 WSIC.
Well, 90-degree heat on a bit of a hiatus for today with some extra clouds, high temperatures only warming into the mid and upper 80s. And you might catch an isolated shower or a quick downpour. There will be a lucky few. The better chance, though, will be to our east, and an isolated shower may remain into the first part of our Saturday. Otherwise, a mainly dry weekend, but the heat and humidity will be back with 90s returning and an even bigger heat wave with triple-digit heat on the way next week. That's your forecast from the WSIC Weather Center. I meteorologist Chase Myers.
The WSIC app is available now wherever you get your apps, featuring local deals from great local businesses like top-notch gutters of Statesville.
Here is your WSIC community calendar. This Thursday, July 11th, Untethered Soul makes their Langtree Live debut. The band is a unique, creative, soulful re-imagination of the music that shaped American culture. Grab your chairs and head to Langtree in Mooresville for the 7:00 PM performance of Untethered Soul with frontman Nick Prestea. This Friday, Trailers of the East Coast in Moxville present the Wilson Strong Cookout. From 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, stop by for a barbecue plate and sides in support of Matt Wilson. We'll see you at Trailers of the East Coast in Moxville this Friday to support Matt with the Wilson Strong Cookout. On Friday, Envision rocks Liberty Park in downtown Mooresville. This first-class, dynamic vocal group delivers a high-energy stage show, complete with professional choreography and silky-smooth harmonies. Liberty Park in downtown Mooresville welcomes you to the Envision Concert on Friday night. The CAIN Arts Week Five of Summer Camps begins Monday, July 15th. Morning and afternoon camps for ages four to 15 include ceramics, drawing, painting, mosaic, mixed-media art, and more. The Davidson Community Players present Footloose the Musical on August 8th, 9th, and 10th. For more information on summer camp programs and the theater schedule and tickets, visit cainarts.org. That's C-A-I-N arts.org. The Cookout Summer Shootout Series heats up the track each week at Charlotte Motor Speedway. The 10-Race Series Night Number Eight is on Tuesday, July 16th. Visit charlottemotorspeedway.com for tickets, details, and information. To keep up with all the events happening around the community and much more, including amazing local deals, download the WSIC News app today.
Now back to We're Just Saying with North Carolina Senator Vicky Sawyer on 1059 100.7 WSIC.
Welcome back to We're Just Saying, and we meaning Senator Vicky Sawyer and also the beautiful dulcet tones of Gene Haupt, Commissioner, not Hoopie. What is that saying that you always say on the campaign trail about your last name?
No hope without help.
There is no hope without help. And actually, you will be on the ballot
Yes.
this fall as well, right? You'll be one choice of the three choice or candidates that will be running for Iredell County Commissioner, and we'll see how that happens, and you and I will be there.
And Melissa and Scotty will be on the ballot.
Yeah, yes.
And Bert Brad will be up in '26.
Okay, very good. So if you like what you're hearing today from Gene Hoop
Hoop.
then make sure to get out there and vote for him in the fall. Now, if you do want to be a part of the show, you can call the studio phone number. It is 844-STUDIO4 or 844-788-3464. But we decided to talk something that I keep reading a lot about, and there's been some back and forth about a conversation about a high school construction in Iredell County. Now, before we go into the nuts and bolts of it, let's start at the beginning because not everybody understands the commissioner's role
Right.
in building a high school. So can you explain that to our listening audience?
We're statutorily required to provide, you know, the schools. And so with the growth we've had, and we did a bond in '14 that passed for construction. We did a bond in 2020 for Mooresville, Mitchell, and Iredell State that passed.
And I like when you tell people, a bond is no more than a mortgage
That's right.
backed by the Iredell County.
And if it's approved by the voters, you don't have to put up collateral for it.
Right.
And you typically get a lower interest rate.
That's right.
Because it's approved by your voters.
Just like you and I build a house, we go get a mortgage, the Iredell County builds a school.
We pride ourselves in, we, you know, government's forebiding of the people.
Sure.
And so we pride ourselves in being transparent. And so we have to work with our municipalities and try to make sure that we always have commercial and industrial growth outpacing residential growth.
Sure.
We've seen a whole lot of residential growth in the past years, and there's a whole lot of things on the agenda right now or on the horizon that's been approved. So we've got to be proactive in looking for these sites and work with the school systems. And the Weathers Creek High School that is going to be located in Troutman on Overcash Road
Right.
Was approved in '20.
On which road you said?
Overcash Road.
Overcash Road, okay.
In Troutman. And so the school with the cost of construction materials, you know, we went through COVID, all those things.
Sure.
And so we've had a setback in time, so we need to get the thing underway. So what we do as commissioners, we have, the original bids came back at about 200 million.
Oh, my gosh.
We asked them to rebid it and try to value engineer.
I'm sorry, 200 million, that's like DC money. I mean, what is, I mean, 200 million for a high school? Holy smoke.
It's crazy.
And I'm not saying that's wrong.
No, 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 no.
When I'm thinking 200 million dollars, I'm going, what, I mean, that's a lot.
Well, the original bond was 80 for that high school.
80 million was the voter-approved?
Voter-approved bond for that project.
Okay.
And so when the prices come back, you know, at the 200 million level
Oh, my gosh.
you know, we asked the school board and administration to go back and rebid it and value engineer and look at some things that they could tweak and change. And the latest bid come in, we met two weeks ago, I think it was, and some bids came in, I think around the one, off the top of my head, I think it was around 130, 40, something like that. They got it down.
So they shaved 70 million dollars off of the
They did off of the building, but you still have FFNE
What's FFNE?
furniture fixtures and equipment.
Okay.
And so what we did that day is we asked them to go back to the contractors and look at breaking out potentially during them phases to where you can have some flexibility in your budget and get some specific pricing for alternates and things. Like, say, if you wanted, it was a capacity bond approved by the voters. So the most important priority is the capacity. Get the kids in a seat so you can educate them. And then later, you may have to work on sports facilities and things like that in a phase, let's say a phase two hypothetically.
Right.
So they're working on that now and going to try to get that back to us. And so hopefully we can get the school started, you know. When we built Lake Norman 20 years ago
I remember.
the day it opened, it was at capacity.
I remember, you were moving in trailers.
So what we're trying to do now is not make that same mistake based on the growth because you figure the planning of it, if you had a bond approved in '20, so the planning '17, '18, '19, so those numbers are five, six years old, whatever. So, you know, we knew we were going to need something bigger than a 1,200 to 6, we needed a 1,200 to 1,600 capacity high school.
1,200 to 1,600 students.
Students.
Okay, gotcha.
And so
Because, you know, South Iredell is busting at the seams.
It is.
Lake Norman is busting at the seams. I mean, you guys have, the school system where you guys purchased this property many years ago.
The school system purchased it many years ago.
Yeah, so it's been in the works for a long time now.
A long time, yeah.
Right, okay, got it, got it.
And so what we're doing, you know, now what we have to do is work together on behalf of the citizens to, you know, we don't need to go out in public and take jabs back and forth. There's been some frustration.
Why not? Isn't that fun?
No, it's not. It's not. So, I mean, I know.
I'm kidding.
But you understand. I'm just saying, you know, we've had a time delay, and the cost of construction materials are consistent with what we're seeing in the country, the region.
Yep.
It's unfortunate with cost of materials, you know, all those things play into that.
Yeah.
So I don't think anybody has done anything wrong. We just have to work together and get it started.
I'm going to
It's much-needed
Right.
school.
That's, no, so you, I think everyone, from my understanding, at the local level is in agreement that there needs to be another high school, right?
Absolutely.
So that, that's a good thing.
The need is not arguable.
That's right. So that's the good thing. And you and I talked about it. You don't have to talk about it long because I'm going to put you on the spot here, but I've always been a fan since I learned about it, a public-private partnership for school construction. You know, because charter schools, they do not get capital dollars from the county commission to buy and build land and property, right? But what they do in charter schools, and I think Pine Lake Prep is a beautiful example, amazing campus, Langtree, there's a few others, they actually do a public-private partnership. So they don't own their land, they lease their land, kind of like the Bank of America, you know, they lease their building from someone else.
Right.
And there have been examples of that in eastern North Carolina and those counties that aren't fortunate like us to be able to have all this industry stuff moving in. I know there's two sides to that, and, but I'm just, you don't have to answer because I just put you on the spot there. But I, I am still a big fan of a public-private partnership so that you could have a private company build it and then you just pay lease payments back.
I think, you know, I'm no expert, but based on my understanding from, you know, the research and the meetings that, that we've had over the years is the public-private's a option. It works well in counties that may not have the growth we have and the AAA bond rating. Right now, I think our biggest positive for us is to be able to borrow money at lower interest rates. And a lot of times, if you've got borrowed money and bond money and you have a public-private partnership combination, people don't want to take a second or third position on the collateral.
Got it.
And so I think where some of that's worked in the past, if I'm not mistaken, is that they had, they just used the public-private and they had first, they owned it, they had collateral, all those things.
Right.
So there's some pros and cons, and it does work where it works.
Yeah, because those folks can use lottery money
Right.
that comes from the North Carolina Education Lottery as payments on the lease.
Right.
So that's kind of a nice way to help those communities.
Well, just like you and I've tried to get things fixed over the years with, you know, we're a Tier 3 county, you know, with some of the lottery money y'all have made available for capital.
Right.
But typically, that so far has mainly gone to Tier 1 and 2 counties and Tier 3 counties, you know, the Tier 3 counties. It is. Well, the Tier 3 counties are paying, in my view, over 90% of the taxes that are being distributed to the Tier 1s and 2 counties. You know, there's 100 counties in the state. There are 20 Tier 3s and 80, or 40 Tier 1s and 40 Tier 2s. So on the NCACC, we've all, we've tried to advocate for a percentage to be dedicated to Tier 3 counties. But back to your private-private partnerships, that works where it works.
Right.
And I'm not saying it couldn't work here. I'm just saying the challenges that I'm familiar with, it's not been particularly needed.
Sure.
Because we have the ability to, with a bond approval by the public, and we have the revenue streams through our property revales and taxes and things and sales taxes and all
Right, sales taxes.
to pay the debt service on what we're entering into. And so if that becomes a challenge at some point, I'm sure we would look at all options because the statutory requirement for us to build the schools doesn't go away.
Right.
If your revenue streams get tight.
That's right.
I mean, the need's the need. And I say, we have Mooresville finished their project, and Mitchell's started or getting ready to start on their bond project.
Uh-huh.
And they're going to do a training center and all that stuff.
Great.
That'll help emergency services, fire police, all those things.
That's great.
So we have a lot of wonderful opportunities in our county, as you know, and I'm going to call them opportunities because there are a lot of counties that would love to have our problem.
Yeah, yeah. I was actually looking at that earlier, and I don't know if you guys are data nerds, but if you are, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has a great website that ranks all, and they call it a county map book.
County map book, yeah.
And it gives you all kinds of cool, like, just comparison between counties. But so as of right now, you know, Iredell County has a population of about 200,000 people, and we're ranked number 14th in population. But they also estimated it to be over 220,000 in by 220, 2028.
With the rate of growth.
Right, so I'm thinking about my own Senate district. I mean, that would be, all of Iredell County would be one Senate district
One Senate district, yeah.
because that's about the population growth. We're the eighth fastest-growing county, as you compare from the 2013.
Right.
But when you're talking about those other communities that are, don't have the same opportunities we have, Terrell County, lowest, Terrell County, that's northeast North Carolina, beautiful area of the state, they had a 21% loss of population.
Yes.
21% loss.
Right.
Talk about, what do you do when you build schools and, you know, and make sure you
We pray a lot.
You pray a lot, exactly.
Your obligation is to provide county services.
Yeah, it doesn't go away.
And then wait before we get, we're going to take a break here in just a few moments,
but I wanted to get out a couple other things. Iredell County ranks seventh in per capita income with 60,700. Warren, in that same part of the area of the state, is the lowest with 38,000 per capita income. So we're almost double. So thank you so much for listening to We're Just Saying. We're going to take a short break with Commissioner Gene Hoop and Senator Vicky Sawyer. We'll be right back after these words.
We'll return with more of NC Senator Vicky Sawyer and We're Just Saying after this short break on 1059 100.7 WSIC.
Well, 90-degree heat on a bit of a hiatus for today with some extra clouds, high temperatures only warming into the mid and upper 80s. And you might catch an isolated shower or a quick downpour. There will be a lucky few. The better chance, though, will be to our east, and an isolated shower may remain into the first part of our Saturday. Otherwise, a mainly dry weekend, but the heat and humidity will be back with 90s returning and an even bigger heat wave with triple-digit heat on the way next week. That's your forecast from the WSIC Weather Center. I meteorologist Chase Myers.
Hi, this is Bob McIntosh with the McIntosh Law Firm in Davidson. Since 1997, we have been committed to providing our clients with competent, caring, and experienced legal services. Learn more at macintoshlawfirm.com.
Getting quality employees to fill positions in your company is essential, but finding those people can be a major hassle unless you use ZipRecruiter. ZipRecruiter makes finding quality people a breeze. And right now, you can try it for free at ziprecruiter.com/free. With ZipRecruiter, one click sends your job to hundreds of top job sites. But more than that, ZipRecruiter's advanced technology identifies the candidates with the skills you need, sends you a list of great matches to review, then actively invites them to apply for your job. And the results speak for themselves. Four out of five employers who post on ZipRecruiter get a quality candidate within the first day. That's right, the first day. Now you can focus on your business and let ZipRecruiter do the work finding the best people for you. See for yourself. Experience the ease, efficiency, and power of ZipRecruiter for free. Just go to ziprecruiter.com/free. That's ziprecruiter.com/free. ZipRecruiter.com/free.
Here's a WSIC Business Minute with local entrepreneur Joe Vagnone.
Radio works because it's intimacy with the audience. The research group Radio Ad Lab found that listeners perceive radio as a one-on-one experience, an emotions-driven environment. Make the most of that openness. Plan for a long-term play. You want to sign off on a budget that you can afford every month? Make it memorable. Put a powerful ad on the radio. Please don't be like everybody else. Be ready to repeat. By 52 weeks, be on every single week of the year. Never let up. Listeners need to hear an ad approximately 12 times before the message begins to sink in. Longer ads work better. A 60-second commercial has a higher recall than a 30-second commercial.
This has been a WSIC Business Minute with Joe Vagnone. Listen for tips on how to improve your business daily on WSIC News Talk Now.
Hi, this is Joshua Dobie. Join me Thursdays at 4:00 PM for Dollars and Cents, a show that focuses on your personal financial journey and the markets around us. That's Dollars and Cents, Thursday afternoons at 4:00 here on WSIC.
Looking for a large private room for your next work function? Or maybe you need a place to bring the whole family for a delicious meal? Pomodoro's of Mooresville has the perfect space for your crowd. Book your next event at pomodoros.com.
This is a Bloomberg Money Minute. Say hello to Rufus. That's what Amazon calls its AI shopping assistant. After five months of testing, it's now being rolled out for everyone. By tapping an icon in Amazon's app, shoppers can bring up a text chat interface and ask for help finding and comparing products and updating orders. Rufus also can do some of what the likes of ChatGPT can do, such as write short stories and help you plan your next vacation. The old notion of corporate bigwigs courting clients and getting deals done while playing a round of golf is being updated. These days, a lot of power players are opting to play pickleball instead. Corporate bookings at pickleball clubs are surging as companies realize the sport is cheaper, less time-consuming, and at least for those with good knees, easier to play. Big banks, including Wells Fargo and Citigroup, have posted quarterly results today with warnings on costs, but investors keep pushing Wall Street higher. Right now, the Dow is gaining a half percent, Nasdaq and S&amp;P 500 each gaining about 1%. Andrew O'Day, Bloomberg Radio.
Call now to speak with NC Senator Vicky Sawyer at 844-STUDIO4. It's We're Just Saying on 1059 100.7 WSIC.
And we are back with Senator Vicky Sawyer and Commissioner Gene Haupt. This is our third segment of the show, and I wanted to dedicate it to something that I actually admire Gene, although I give him a hard time mostly. I admire Commissioner Haupt about, and that's Although I give him a hard time mostly, I admire Commissioner Halt about, and that's his ability to communicate. And we were talking during the break about how important it is to have a good relationship with all electives, from school board to county commissioner to the state reps and, and even your federal reps, right? Because there are things that happen. Yeah. And so Gene, you are a good communicator with that. And, um, sometimes I, uh, you over-communicate. But I'm gonna go, it's okay.
Come on.
A little bit. I mean, you know, I, I, I have spent over an hour with you on the phone before.
Sometimes the loudest yeller or the loudest squeaky wheel gets the grease.
But do talk about that. And I think that's probably the secret to some of your success and your staying power as a commissioner is being able to communicate with others.
I think that's important. I call it a network. I mean, our citizens, they expect us to advocate on their behalf.
Right.
So a lot of times people are so busy, they're not in the loop all the time. They trust you to make decisions of the options you have.
Right.
But when things hit their, hit their family personally.
Sure.
Whether it's a veteran needing services or something out of Washington or, or state or whatever. You know, it's not particularly in my lane, but I know, I think it's my responsibility or elected's responsibility to be able to reach up to you guys in Raleigh or Washington on their behalf and try to get whatever they're frustrated about. You know, in Washington right now, one of the frustrations is, you know, you've got eighty percent of the buildings are empty. There's twenty percent of people actually working.
Oh, gosh.
In person.
Right.
In a rented or owned building, government building.
Right.
And so you've got twenty percent of the staff trying to do a hundred percent of the staff's on-site duties. And that's a challenge to the taxpayers. There, there, a lot of people are very frustrated and, and we won't make it a negative segment, but.
Come on, let's go negative.
Well, I think people expect us to, to deliver results and if you can, be able to explain why.
Right.
Our job is to make their lives better. And I think we do that. I think when we both started years ago, our job was to make our citizens' lives better, to make the best decisions we have of the options we have. And one day when we leave, leave it better than we found it.
Absolutely. I think some of the frustration, especially that I see from folks calling in, is that they attribute the Department of Motor Vehicles or the construction of a roadway to me. As if I'm the one sitting there making them not be able to
Right.
get a driver's license appointment. Like somehow it's my fault that that is not happening. And you have to say, guys, I am here to help you any way I can, but I'm not the one pulling those levers. That is the governor. That is the governor's appointee.
We get a lot of response, we get a lot of frustrations and emotions taken out.
Right, absolutely. So they don't necessarily respond directly to you, but you can work with them to cut some of that red tape. And man, there's some red tape.
Every day, and I'm sure you do and others, that actually do the job, which you're elected to do. You know, I think there are some people that, that want the title and not the job.
Yeah.
But if you do the job, we spend at least, you know, twenty-five to thirty hours a week at least doing that job.
Just the constituent services.
Because people call with, you know, with, uh, challenges. You know, we had a, a staff went up and did a convenience site meeting last night in Harmony. We're putting a new convenience site on.
Which means trash collection.
Trash collection. We're moving the one off of nine oh one. And some people had intentionally put out misinformation that it was a landfill.
What? People would intentionally put out misinformation? No.
That's a, that's a big topic. I mean, well, I want people to call and ask questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
The more they're educated of what we do and how we do it and our options we're trying to accomplish. It's a convenient site for the people in the north end, so they don't have to drive to Statesville. So we have, we've been looking for land since I've been here for years.
Right.
And we found a place and, and bought it. And some people, um, did a great job calling before they overreacted and got upset.
Yeah.
And said, tell us what you have. So a convenience site's going to be on a concrete slab, trash going in dumpsters, be hauled by us to the landfill. Not going to have any land contamination, creek contamination. Uh, I don't think it'll be significant, uh, traffic. We've talked to you about if, if the need arises down the road to try to put a turn lane off of Chief Thomas on two twenty-one north. But we won't know till we know that that's a problem, right?
Sure.
I mean, there's all kinds of things we're all looking at all the time. It's a moving target.
Yeah.
But just that is an example. The school situation, the, uh, infrastructure traffic situation that, that you guys have helped get things done is.
Right.
You know, um, people call us because they're emotional and they're frustrated and we get it.
Yeah.
And we try to help them many, many, many times every day.
Right.
And, but they have to remember that day-to-day operations are run by some other people.
Right.
And we have to try to communicate with them to get them to do their job.
So my favorite, uh, or least favorite is when I see, and oftentimes you'll send it to me. Um, someone is on there blaming me for something. I mean, whatever, something out of my control, you know? Roads, traffic, D M V, all this other stuff. And then, and they, they have it all figured out, right? They got it all figured out. Everything. They know what's going on and it's all my fault. And then I look in my email and my phone and my legislative email. And I've never heard from them. Not one call to see what is my side. And so then I start thinking, are you really putting this information out to better our community? Or, or is it really self-serving to stir up an issue to have people to look at you? And then at that moment, in that moment, I discredit everything that they've said.
Yeah.
Because they have not reached out to me to ask the answer to the question they have. Now, now if I don't answer to their likeness, have at it, right? You absolutely can. But you're, you're intentionally misinforming constituents in a look at me moment.
Right.
You know what I mean? It's like the town crier, like, let's, if you, if you want to fix.
Political misinformation.
Yeah.
It's, it's more of a sabotage, you know? And you can't go on, you can't win on a social media site. Try to go on there and debate with, with, I call it keyboard warriors.
Yeah.
Fake, fake, uh, names and fake profiles and things like that. I would rather people come to our meeting when we meet and, in real time, ask us questions, let us answer them. And I'm not the smartest cookie in the world, but I'll get you the answers. If I don't know it, I'll get it.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I was talking to some gentlemen last week about some of these various issues and things like back when we did the revow on things and people calling. They're, they're talking about what we're doing and why we're doing it. And I said, and I, I always like putting this question back.
Yeah.
Of what would you do if you were in my shoes? And they'll say, well, I don't know what you know. And I said, exactly. That's my point. I appreciate you calling.
Three calls? Thirty minutes. Sorry about that. Forgive me.
And I said, you know, we got five people on our board that are making the best decisions of the options.
Right, absolutely.
And our votes are ninety-nine percent or more unanimous because it's the best options.
Sure.
That we have.
So I do think someone heard the call because someone has called into the radio show. So welcome on with Senator Vicky Sawyer and Commissioner Gene Halt. Thank you so much for calling into the show.
Hey, Ms. Sawyer, thanks for taking my call today.
Absolutely. What can we, what can we try to answer for you?
Okay. Uh, I was just, uh, I was noticing that, uh, North Carolina has signed up under a private, uh, gun sale act called the Universal Background Check.
Okay.
It's, uh, it seems to me it's been voted in to take effect October the first. And, uh, if, if I'm reading things correctly, uh, they were supposed to the first of July to take fifty thousand dollars out of the general, uh, the general fund to, uh, do advertising to make the general public aware of the ruling that they have come up with.
Okay.
Uh, right now, there is twenty-six states that has got a lawsuit against the A T F for the rulings that they have made under the Biden administration. And it appears that North Carolina has took it upon themselves to, uh, to vote in this, uh, universal background check across the board without any type of public, uh, awareness or anything involved in it.
I've not heard of it.
If I'm reading correctly, it, it's saying that, uh, after October the first, if you're a private citizen of the United States and you decide that you'd like to sell your firearm to your best friend and you do so without them going to a dealer and doing what they call an F F L background check with the Nick check system, that, uh, you will be considered a felon. And under this act, that would, uh, uh, people don't even know that this is what they've done. And I'm just wondering, is this something that they've done that is, uh, legal or is this something you can just do right off the hat? And if so, who voted for all this?
Yeah, you know what? Good question. And forgive me for not knowing, but I, if you don't mind, I will work on that and try to get you an answer to that. Hopefully by the end of the show, I'll, I'll text some folks that I know who have a really good background in this. So forgive me for not knowing it offhand, but that is something that I do need to know more about. Thank you so much for calling in the show. We are going to take a quick break and I appreciate your calls.
Look under Senate, Senate Bill eight five two.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Thanks for calling the show.
There's more We're Just Saying with North Carolina Senator Vicky Sawyer on the way from one oh five nine, one hundred point seven, W S I C.
Well, ninety degree heat on a bit of a hiatus for today with some extra clouds, high temperatures only warming into the mid and upper eighties. And you might catch an isolated shower or a quick downpour. There will be a lucky few. The better chance though will be to our east. And an isolated shower may remain into the first part of our Saturday. Otherwise, a mainly dry weekend, but the heat and humidity will be back with nineties returning and an even bigger heat wave with triple-digit heat on the way next week. That's your forecast from the W S I C Weather Center. I meteorologist Chase Myers.
Here is your W S I C Community Calendar. This Thursday, July eleventh, Untethered Soul makes their Langtree live debut. The band is a unique, creative, soulful re-imagination of the music that shaped American culture. Grab your chairs and head to Langtree in Mooresville for the seven P M performance of Untethered Soul with frontman Nick Prestea. This Friday, Trailers of the East Coast in Mocksville present the Wilson Strong Cookout. From eleven A M. To three P M., stop by for a barbecue plate and sides in support of Matt Wilson. We'll see you at Trailers of the East Coast in Mocksville this Friday to support Matt with the Wilson Strong Cookout. On Friday, Envision rocks Liberty Park in downtown Mooresville. This first-class, dynamic vocal group delivers a high-energy stage show, complete with professional choreography and silky smooth harmonies. Liberty Park in downtown Mooresville welcomes you to the Envision Concert on Friday night. The Kane Center for the Arts, Week Five of Summer Camps begins Monday, July fifteenth. Morning and afternoon camps for ages four to fifteen include ceramics, drawing, painting, mosaic, mixed media art and more. The Davidson Community Players present Footloose the Musical on August eighth, ninth and tenth. For more information on summer camp programs and the theater schedule and tickets, visit kainarts.org. That's C A I N arts.org. The Cookout Summer Shootout Series heats up the track each week at Charlotte Motor Speedway. The Ten Raise Series Night Number Eight is on Tuesday, July sixteenth. Visit charlottmotorspeedway.com for tickets, details and information. To keep up with all the events happening around the community and much more, including amazing local deals, download the W S I C News App today.
Now more We're Just Saying with North Carolina Senator Vicky Sawyer on one oh five nine, one hundred point seven, W S I C.
Welcome back to our last segment of We're Just Saying. We are here with Iredell County Commissioner Gene Halt. Which I said correct because he says there's no hope without help.
That's right.
And I am Senator Vicky Sawyer. And I do want to do, I did a quick Google search and forgive me. I just actually got my concealed carry permit not too long ago. So I should be really up on all of the gun laws. And I, uh, actually did learn a lot. Fraternal Order of Police did an amazing job in Iredell County, teaching me and my daughter and my friends um, to get our concealed carry. So that was an awesome experience. Okay. First question, Senate Bill eight five two. That is a bill that was introduced by the Democrats, um, in the Senate. It was introduced and it went to the same place that a lot of other bills go to. It's called the Rules Committee and it stays in the Rules Committee. So the universal background check that the caller was asking about before, that Bill eight five two went nowhere. So just, just, you can file any bill that you want to in, in North Carolina as a senator or as a state representative. It doesn't mean that it becomes law. So you're good there. Um, and then, uh, we did last session repeal the pistol purchase permit. And a lot of it was because of sheriff, um, some sheriffs in larger communities like Mecklenburg County, for say, uh, was taking years to get people their, their purchase. Yeah, permit. That's hard to say that. P P P. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, um, because of that, uh, we repealed that law. And so you can get it, but there is a federal, I think, background check if you do not have your concealed carry.
Right.
So that's kind of where we're at with that, but I will get more clarification, uh, as we move forward. So thank you for the call. If you want me.
Don't want people getting in trouble, you know, individual to individual sales.
Right.
You know, because you don't know who you're selling to. Because used to, like, I know when I sold something, I would get, I would have them get a, if they didn't have a concealed carry permit, I would have them get a permit from the sheriff.
Sure.
And I would retain that just to know I bought, I sold something to somebody that could get it.
Yeah.
That didn't have it, that weren't a convicted felon, et cetera.
Right.
I'm not sure what he's talking about, but I know that would be important to our constituents to make sure that they're not going to get in trouble person to person because they have no way to know.
Yeah.
Who that person is.
All right. Well, if you want to call to the show and have me try to answer your question, feel free. The studio, the studio phone number is eight four four, Studio four or eight four four, seven eight eight, three four six four. Commissioner Halt, we were talking about the network. We were talking about folks reaching out to us and thankfully they do. Some of the, they do reach out to us. But now let's talk about a little bit Iredell County moving forward. We've had a lot of conversation when you were talking about growth.
Right.
Now, remember, I always think back because I went to U N C Charlotte and I started in nineteen ninety-three. And I had some friends or older friends that I worked with that became friends that were from the Dorita community. So if you're an old Charlatan, you know that there used to be a community called Dorita.
Right.
And I think about, you know, seeing that urban sprawl. And I've been watching it since that time move straight up the interstate. And it seems like that urban sprawl is coming right to your city of Statesville. And then we have some concerns in North Iredell with folks wanting to protect farmland. And there's a lot of thought about how do you do that, but while still preserving an individual's property rights, remember? I mean, this is a big deal when you're talking about a man and woman's property and how government does that. So tell me, what are the conversations that you're hearing from people? And what do you see moving forward for Iredell County's future?
We just did our twenty forty-five, uh, plan and that plan helps plan for growth.
Yeah.
And, and so what we did in that, we wanted to protect our, uh, business and industrial corridors because those are the most important as far as revenues, tax revenues. And make sure that they're closest to the interstates, main corridors, et cetera. And then one of our main goals was to preserve and protect farmland.
Okay.
But you, but when you're doing that, there's been conversations now that are in early stages. It hasn't come to the commissioners yet. But to where, you know, for developments, I think of six or more in the north end, north of the river. There's been some discussions as far as limiting the lot size.
Okay.
If you have six or more properties. And so, uh, five or less, it, it, now there's a restriction. I think of one acre per lot.
Okay.
Right now. And then if it gets to a certain, uh, um, level, I think there's two acre per lots in there.
Okay.
So I think people don't seem to like the idea of a five acre minimum, six or more.
Sure.
But I haven't got all the details on it yet and we will get that to the people. And I know you have a caller, but
Yeah.
Those things are important to make sure we're working on with our municipalities. And a lot of confusion comes from the difference between E T J.
Right.
Extranetional jurisdiction. And if the municipalities are being petitioned by a property owner.
Right.
To be annexed.
Right.
We don't have the authority to, to stop that.
Right.
The, the, the E T J areas are where the municipalities control the zoning rights and enforcements in the E T J. Some people are getting the two confused with the growth.
It's confusing. It is confusing.
And so we're going to try to do a better job of getting that information out.
Hold that thought.
Let's get the caller.
Let's get the callers. Hold that thought because I know a lot of people are very interested in this topic. And we do have a caller on the line. Thank you so much for calling into We're Just Saying. You're on with Senator Vicky Sawyer and Commissioner Gene Halt.
I was, um, listen, this is kind of on the subject a bit. And that is, if you go back to the last story, the guy said there's supposed to be money allotted to put signs up, okay?
Okay.
But there's no signs up. So where did that money go? Same thing, kind of what you're talking about. There's like this confusion that gets created so that money can move places that we don't see. And I say, should all be put to the deficit? I think everybody should donate one dollar per paycheck. That's fifty-two million dollars a year per person. But I'm just saying he's right. I didn't catch all what you're talking about, the land deal you're talking about right now.
Yes, ma'am.
But the point of the matter is, we need to try to make it so people aren't sneaking money places.
Got it.
And have it go where it's intended. That's all.
Right.
Yes, ma'am. Good. Absolutely. Thank you so much for that because I tell you that when we do the budget at the state level, my biggest focus this year, and you'll see this, one of our highlights of what we did get done, is we are now making sure that the D O T, the North Carolina Department of Transportation, has to align their budget with the state certified budget so that we can be transparent in what money is going where. Because right now is.
The past, that didn't happen.
It has not. It had not. There's actually a, I think it's called Gatsby law. It's a government accountability. And it's where you have to, uh, government has to actually report based on accounting standards. Um, so that everyone can read those sheets, right? And so, um, I completely agree with you. But as soon as the General Assembly, and actually maybe as the commissioner, as soon as we approve a budget, we kind of like put the chips on the table over to the governor's agencies for the most part, or to the elected's agencies. And sometimes you just don't know where those departments are putting money. And I was recently shocked when, uh, the agency came to us and asking about a rail corridor, um, and they were like, well, we can cobble together. They said cobble together. Cobble together. A billion dollars. Cobble together a billion dollars? Where is this money coming from and how do you do it? And again, I continue to press over and over again with transparency in that agency budget. Because remember, where our area is feeling the heat because they ran out of money in two thousand seventeen.
Citizens in this country expect and should.
Yeah.
Or in demand of transparency.
Transparency.
And that's the biggest frustration, as you know. You know, I remember you over the years and the recent years, we would be talking about something and you would be frustrated about asking them, you know, where the money's gone.
Right.
They can't answer that. That's a problem. And.
It's a big problem.
When we approved the budget, you know, our manager and administrative team working with our departments and employees, you know, we're audited annually, the school system's audited. Sometimes people out of frustrations will, you know, say, well, you're misspending money or you're doing this, you're doing that. I want them to understand from our perspective is there's an annual audit that we all go through. And if there's, and if there's any issues, there are factors and it's outside agency. So if you don't like what we're spending on, that's, I respect that a hundred percent.
Absolutely.
But don't allow people for, to spread misinformation for political purposes or other vendettas. So just go out there and freely throw out a word that you're stealing money or misspending money or doing something you're not doing. People have a right to their opinion as to what we're prioritizing. But you know, in our county, we've really tried to invest in my tenure as a commissioner, workforce development, work with the schools because industry and business coming here need a workforce.
Sure.
And if people have disposable income, as you know, our restaurants and all these other things, you talk about the median incomes. If you don't have it to certain levels, you're getting restaurants now in Statesville that used to go to Hickory and Mooresville.
Yeah.
Because the incomes are getting up, the disposable income, so people can go out to eat.
Yeah.
So a lot of things that people don't realize that play into all of this.
The whole ecosystem, the whole ecosystem. It's such a balancing act.
As we advocate in a, in a broad spectrum for our citizens, from investments in, you know, incentives is, is a necessary thing to draw people here. We don't like doing it.
Yeah.
But if you don't compete with your surrounding states and counties, you're not going to have business and industry coming here to provide jobs and things like that. And with the two interstates, we've got an asset most others don't have.
That's right.
And so we have to have a delicate balance with the land preservation for the farmland. We don't want to prohibit people from getting maximum money if they want to sell for their property.
Right.
But we also want to try to restrict the high-density residential growth. Because as you know, that comes into us and requires us to build schools.
Right.
And then when we had our revow, we could not lower the tax rate more than the three and three-quarter cent that we did because of all the responsibilities and obligations.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a double-edged sword, right?
It's a double-edged sword.
It really is.
And so.
Yep.
People that are fair-minded.
Sure.
When you explain all these things, most of the time I hear, well, I didn't realize that.
Sure.
You tell people twenty-six county departments, nineteen fires, three rescues, three education entities. Well, I didn't realize y'all do all of that.
Right.
So, and we have to have top-quality employees.
We do, we do. And then right as we're closing out the show, I wanted to let you know that you have been listening to Commissioner Gene Halt. He will be on the ballot. Reach out to him. You're listening to Senator Vicky Sawyer. I will be on the ballot, so if you have questions, reach out to them. Next week, I'll be gone. The week after that, I'm doing PBS State Line, so tune in to see me on PBS State Lines at Fridays at eight thirty. But otherwise, thank you so much for being here, Commissioner Halt.
We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Have a wonderful, wonderful weekend, everyone.